Yeah. Memory lane.
Um, I'm sure you could ask. I could send you on.
No, but I like this.
We don't know what genders, huh?
I'll send you the link though, because you have it.
I was gonna say, but she wants paper.
I understand.
No, it's not about forgetting.
I read that the first thing I saw.
Why?
Oh, it's just wonderful. He is a man. No, no, wait, for that one. Remember back to back?
Yeah. Memory lane.
Um, I'm sure you could ask. I could send you on.
No, but I like this.
I take a lot of notes.
We don't know what genders, huh?
I'll send you the link though, because you have it.
I was gonna say, but she wants paper.
I understand.
Every time I go to restaurants, I'm like, oh, yes.
No, it's not about forgetting.
I'm gonna say hi to you.
I was more concerned as to whether or not.
Hannah, is this yours?
Yeah, I said, I said.
Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Lee here. Counselor Mercer.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Ro. Counselor Scott.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitch here. Counselor Janess.
Here.
Eleven present.
You forgot Counselor Yam.
Any moment of silence?
Counselor Yam, excuse me.
Any memorial this evening? Any moment of silence? Hearing none. I'd like to welcome everyone in the chamber to the meeting and also everyone watching at home. Before we start the meeting, I'm gonna thank Vice Chair Gitch here for chairing the meeting for the past couple of weeks, and I heard it was efficient, and the meeting was done by 8:00 PM. So I'm hoping we can... So I'm hoping maybe we can finish by 7:59 PM this evening. With that said, we will now start with the mayor's business. 2.1 Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Need a motion to exempt place on file by Counselor Ro, second by Counselor Yam. Motion is passed. And I see in the audience we have the chancellor of UMass Lowell, and it is my honor on behalf of Counselor Noon and the entire city council to present this citation to you in celebrations of AAPI Month. I will read if you could please come to the podium. This is very exciting to me, and I know that it's... We have quite to read, but it's not even a fraction of all the things that you accomplished, chancellor. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Julie Chen, chancellor, University of Massachusetts Lowell. Julie Chen is the fourth chancellor of the University of Massachusetts Lowell. She is UMass Lowell's first Asian-American and first LGBTQ-plus chancellor. In her 26-years career at UMass Lowell, she has served as professor of engineering, vice provost for research, vice chancellor for research and economic development, and now chancellor. Under her leadership, UMass Lowell's four strategic priorities are enrollment and student success, a diverse welcoming and inclusive campus, research excellence, and partnering with community. She prioritizes collaboration that will have impact, including that with the city of Lowell, K-12 schools, and community colleges, local nonprofits, industry, and elected officials. Promoting and building university's success is just as important as promoting and building citywide success for all who live, work, and visit here. Her recent inauguration incorporated 10 Lowell restaurants and cultural performances representative of the community and campus. Chen has served on many editorial boards, advisory committees, and review panels for journals and federal agencies, including the National Science Foundation, the National Institutes of Health, the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, the US Department of Energy, and the US Department of Defense. Based on her expertise in materials, nano-manufacturing, and advanced manufacturing, she has testified before Congress and represented the United States in several international workshops. She serves on the Board of Governor Healey's Economic Development Planning Council, as well as on the boards of the Massachusetts Life Sciences Center and Mass Tech Collaborative, as well as the Massachusetts Advanced Manufacturing Collaborative, and the Massachusetts Military Asset and Security Strategy Task Force. Chen received her PhD, Master of Science, and Bachelor of Science degrees in mechanical engineering from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, where she was a student, athlete, and academic All-American in softball and field hockey. In 2019, she was awarded an honorary degree from Queens University Belfast. She is recipient of the US Army Public Service Commendation Medal in Army's Fourth Highest Civilian Honor in recognition of her leadership in developing the innovative ecosystem. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby offers our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your many years of mentoring, supporting, and serving as a positive role model for multiple generations in our city. Signed by myself and the entire city council. Chancellor, that was long-winded, and like I said, it's only a fraction of your accomplishment, but to put it succinctly and simply, I, as the mayor of the city of Lowell, and on behalf of everyone in the entire city, we just want to thank you for your friendship, all your hard work, all your dedication to make the university a great partner with the city and with everyone that lives here, work here, as you mentioned, and everyone around the country and all over the world who come to Lowell, who come to UMass Lowell, and make them proud to being here. Just I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you would like to say a few words, please.
Just very briefly, thank you, Mayor Chow. Thank you to the city council for this great honor. Really, on behalf of several of my colleagues and friends of the university, I hope you do know that the university sees our role in this community and this city as one of a great partnership, and we really look forward to continuing to work together with everyone here. It's also a great honor in AAPI Month. I think we know that the AAPI community is important for this city, and UMass Lowell is an AAPI institution of higher ed. So, thank you again for this honor, and I really look forward to working with everybody here.
Patty, come on. I'll take a picture.
Come on, Patty.
I'll take a picture. Go ahead. Come on in. She's gonna send the picture to whoever wants it.
UMass Lowell.
Yeah, UMass Lowell.
Need a motion to exempt place on file the citation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Robinson. Motion is passed. We now go to section three on the agenda, which is the city clerk. 3.1 Minutes of City Council Meeting, May 16th. Any questions or comments? Counselor Leahy. Comments with approval by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mosier. Motion is approved. We now go to the section four, communication from city manager. These are the motion responses, and we'll start with the alphabet A on the motion response on baseball tournament at La Laje Park, and that was presented by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Gitch here. Any comments by any counselor? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'm looking forward to when we can get back to doing that in the future, and hopefully we can get something going for them somewhere in the city this year. So, thank you very much.
Counselor Gitch here.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I think it's great news that we're gonna put the funds into the park, and it's the perfect time where UMass Lowell baseball team has some downtime and they can actually work on it, and it will actually do much more for kids in the city. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Now we now go to the next.
Mr. Mayor, can I...
Counselor Robinson?
Make a motion to go take something out of order?
Sure.
Can I please make a motion to take motion 7.2... What's the one we have a registered speaker on, Mr. Clerk?
7.2.
Make a motion to take 7.2 out of order, please. Suspension.
Motion by Counselor Robinson to take item 7.2 out of order, second by Counselor Gitch here. 7.2 is a motion, is a joint motion by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Gitch here, request city manager draft a letter on behalf of the city council and community stakeholders to be sent to State Department of Housing newly appointed secretary, as well as Sheriff Kottugian, Senator Cindy Friedman, and the Restoration Center team to explore feasibility of creating a pilot program utilizing the former Superior Courthouse to address the mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, and housing crisis impacting our community. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Karen Frederick.
Good evening. I'm Karen Frederick. I'm the CEO of Community Teamwork. Mayor Chow, counselors, and manager, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about motion 7.2 by Counselors Robinson and Gitch here, to explore the feasibility of creating a pilot program at the former Superior Courthouse building. Not only does research tell us the answer to homelessness is more housing units, our work here in Lowell at Community Teamwork demonstrates this. Thirteen years ago, we were in a homeless crisis here in the city, much like today, having the same discussions about taking down camps and what to do about panhandlers. Community Teamwork was issued 60 vouchers for unhoused individuals who were living in camps around the street. We housed 60 individuals. Two years after that, 80% remain housed. The difference from today? There were housing units available. The crisis has returned due to the loss of units, skyrocketing rents, and the lack of development of new units that are so desperately needed. The Superior Court and the related parcels present an important opportunity to develop permanent housing so desperately needed for those who are unhoused. Having a significant number of housing units in this facility can make a critical dent in the over 200 units we still need of the 300 that we were told we needed, I can't tell you how many years ago. Ensuring that the services that Counselors Robinson and Gitch here refer to in their motion are readily available enable people to stay housed, continue to work, or enter treatment. I just want to mention a statement that was brought up by Mahasser at a recent Hunger and Homeless Commission that our data and national data do not agree with. It was stated that 85% of homeless individuals are experiencing mental health or substance abuse. This is not accurate according to our data or the National Alliance of Mental Illness. The National Alliance of Mental Illness tells us that 20 to 25% of the US homeless population suffers from mental illness, and about 50% of those who are chronically homeless, and chronically homeless are those who have been on the street for over a year, have co-occurring substance abuse. And research has demonstrated that both of these populations respond more favorably to treatment when they are stably housed. The fact is, the fastest-growing segment of the homeless population are seniors, and their numbers are expected to increase by 30% over the next few years. Community Teamwork operates four congregant shelters and close to 100 scattered site apartments for formerly unhoused people in the city of Lowell. There is more housing provided by our partners like Smark and the House of Hope. Most people don't even know where our units are. They're simply homes for our community members. In Shamsford, we've housed up to 100 individuals for the past two years, and in Methuen, we're currently housing 100-plus families experiencing homelessness. The Superior Court building has the potential to have a significant number of permanent housing units in addition to the needed services that could be transformative, significantly reducing the population on the street and in camps as we did 13 years ago. Housing is the solution to homelessness. Thank you very much.
Anymore registered speaker, Mr. Clerk?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the speaker. Again, this is pretty much a common sense approach. It's, I'm seeking exploration and to bring stakeholders to the table to at least have a conversation. You've just heard from one of the experts I'd consider in the community, in the field, that's in the trenches dealing with these type of issues.
I think we need to really sit down and flesh this out at the table and figure out, is this something worth exploring that we can bring key partners in on? And what funding streams are available for a project of this size? Because if we continue to do nothing, I'm fearful that the numbers are going to continue to grow. Our encampment numbers are growing, and if you look at the map, geographically, Manchester has banned encampments. Mass and Cass has been cleaning out encampments. Geographically, we're pretty much smack dab in the middle. We're a one-way train ticket and cross the street, and you're seeing firsthand. Our businesses are feeling it firsthand. Our residents are seeing this firsthand. We have people looking for help in some instances, which isn't the norm, but there are people looking for help with zero beds available, zero mental health help available, any of this. We have a golden opportunity here, and all I'm asking is, let's explore it. Does it make sense? And if it doesn't make sense, we're going to have to continue the hunt. But if it does make sense, I think we have a great opportunity to make a significant impact on a problem that we've all identified and been talking about for a year and a half now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. There's no secret that we took on the homeless when we took on a shelter in our city. We took on twenty-four other communities that actually provide to that shelter or bring people to that shelter, that are part of that shelter. So, in that area, when you look at the South Common and you look at up into Appleton Street, that whole area, we see the results of this. They come to where social services are. That's what the city of Lowell is, a big social service network for people in need of help. I looked at Gorm Street with Councilor Robinson, and you said, you know, we had St. Peter's Church there we took down because nobody wanted, we didn't have the help to restore it, and here we are, across the street, we have a courthouse where I don't know who it's going to be feasible for to rehab it. You look out our window, if you look to the right of the manager, you'll see across the street the Smith Baker. And I understand what the neighbors are saying, and maybe it's not the right place. Through you, to the manager or to Giovanni, 100 Stackpole Street is a residence building over there. Do you know what is going on over there or what goes on in there? It's directly almost across the street from these saints.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, we've been having a discussion with Lowell General, that's the former nurses' building, and that has been presented with many issues and many challenges within that building itself. But that is something that we have been exploring. Just actually had an opportunity to meet with incoming President Amy Hoey to have that discussion, but there are significant challenges in that building.
In, as there is at the courthouse. So, in the city, how do we bring people closer to services? We have a hospital across the street, maybe there's a way that something like this could happen. When I spoke to Councilor Robinson, we talked about solutions. We're looking to try to figure out ways to put things on the table that can help. Is, you know, this location the best one? Maybe not. Maybe the neighbors don't want it, but maybe down the street over there, there's another avenue. This whole motion to me was to start a tough conversation in the city and say, how do we actually help people? You know, no one wants to kick them out, but I have to, I have to tell you that the businesses need our help right now. People's life savings are in there, and now you go downtown, to me, a lot of that area, it doesn't look as clean as it could. You look at the roads down there, they're not Cape Seal, they're not Fog Seal, they're not clean, they don't look up to par with a lot of downtowns that you see throughout the state. You could simply Cape Seal some of that if it met the qualifications of what could be done, and it would give it a new life. It would look new, like the boulevard they did in front of the water department from Market Basket down to the Old Makecom. That wasn't a fresh road. That was just a Cape Seal that went over, and it looks brand-new, and it rides well. Something like that could go to the downtown and bring it life, and it's pennies on the dollar versus milling and overlaying a cobblestone road down there. We have to do something that gives people hope, that looks and says, we're in this for the long run, or we're never going to have a way of solving people's issues, whether they're mental health, whether they're drug addiction, whether they're from abuse, whatever the issue is, we have to tackle it with real solutions. And I think this is a good start to the conversation. Is that property one hundred percent? That's why it's called feasibility. That's why we said feasibility. It wasn't, let's put it here and this is the end result. So, I thank you, Mr. Manager, for taking this serious and starting this conversation with us. I think Giovanni and your staff is important to trying to find these solutions. I think there is a solution within all of us, and we have to figure it out. And I thank Councilor Robinson for putting this forward. Thank you.
Councilor Mosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this motion, I commend my two colleagues. I commend them for at least trying to come up with a solution, with a plan to explore this issue, to discuss this issue. That's what it's all about. But I will be honest, because I've myself said that we need to have a building somewhere where we could take the homeless and put them in and provide services for them, especially the mentally ill. I don't think I could take mentally ill people and try to get them an apartment because they can't even remember or do, take their medication, never mind do things for themselves that would require, you know, simple things. I don't think that some of them could do that. And if people are on some sort of a drug, I wouldn't want to get them an apartment when they probably will be there to do drugs. I don't know. Maybe what I'm saying is going to offend people, but I really feel that we need something, some building, but we got to remember what building we need or what type of a building we're looking for. I agree with Ms. Frederick, what she said. Everything she said was truthful, and I understand that, but we got to remember where this building is. I'll be honest, I had many calls from many people today about this motion. They're upset because it's their neighborhood. They said, I don't want my neighborhood to start looking like the area of Summer Street and South Street. I know that. I work there. I see it every day. Because we have the Elliott Church, and they try so hard to take care of people and feed them and clothe them and everything else, I called DPW today. I didn't ask them or demand them to do something. I just suggested that all the barrels in the area were full and the stuff is on the ground and blowing all over the place. I'm not telling you to clean it, but if you take a ride by there and see for yourself what I'm talking about, then you do what you think is right, because I don't want to violate section 107. And that's why I'm phrasing it like this, but I don't, neighborhoods don't want this to happen in their area, and I certainly don't want to jeopardize the integrity of neighborhoods, the character of the neighborhoods. Although this is needed, you got to weigh it. You got to weigh it. I'm not going to burden people that are hard-working, tax-paying people, and put something in their neighborhood that is not going to be conducive to what they expect. And this is that particular thing, I feel. I just want to say that before I would support something like this, I think we should try very, very hard and lobby the state and try to get some activity going at Tewksbury State Hospital. I know we've tried this time and time again, but I think if we put the pressure on them and ask our state reps and Congresswoman to please plead with the state, Senator Kennedy, to try to get something at Tewksbury State Hospital. I know people are doing their utmost in different communities, but sometimes I think we could have a little bit more help. So, that's where I stand with that. I love this motion because people are thinking, but I can't support it being in that neighborhood because the people told me, please, you represent me, please bring my message to City Hall, and that's what I just did. Thank you.
Councilor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome back, by the way. I appreciate this motion being brought forward by my colleagues, and I appreciate Ms. Frederick coming out and speaking on this topic, something she knows very, very deeply in a way that I could never hope to understand. So, I appreciate her insight. I appreciate also the effort to try and find something that we can do to help. And I love this concept of a restoration center. Maybe the building isn't the right building to use. Maybe Tewksbury State Hospital, or maybe it's 100 Stackpole Street, or maybe it's the St. Louis School, or maybe it's some other building none of us have thought of. But if we can get something like this going, I think it's going to improve the lives of the people in that neighborhood. That neighborhood has suffered a lot with the situation just a block away from here and everybody that's hanging out at all hours of the night. I see it most nights when I leave the council meeting, I'll swing by that way on my way home, and I always take a look and see what's going on. And it's upsetting to see it, and it's, you know, a constant situation. So, if we can do something to help get those people out of that situation that they find themselves in and give them that rung up to help them get in permanent housing with support in a environment that fosters recovery, growth, and healing, I think that is exactly the right path, and that's the way we got to go, and that's the best thing we can do for the neighbors, the neighborhood, the folks who are sleeping on the street, and everyone else in the city. So, I applaud this motion. I look forward to seeing what this feasibility looks like, but I will say that if we do do something in this building, I do want to make sure that there is onsite management and supervision, 24/7 if we can do it, because I do not want to see what the neighbors fear come to fruition. And I think that with careful planning and engaging the right people and making sure that we have enough hands helping with this lift, we can accomplish something great here. So, I hope to, I hope to see this discussion and hear how it goes and see what the next steps are. I really hope that the governor and her administration are interested in partnering with something like this, because I really think that, as Councilor Mosier said, we're going to need help from the state on this. We're not going to be able to do it by ourselves. We're not going to be able to do it just with the organizations in Lowell. We're going to need, we're going to need some bigger help. That's a big building. It's going to cost a lot of money to convert it into something like this. It's going to cost even more money to run it and run it properly, short-term, long-term. So, to make sure that's set up, we're going to need help from the state, in my opinion. So, I look forward to seeing where this goes, and thanks to my colleagues for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question to the city manager to a CFO. What's the status of the building right now? Who owns it? Where is it at on the list of state, city, going to auction? Where's it at?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, the DCAM currently owns it. They own all assets of the state, and currently right now, you know, we were told in about two-to-three time, two-to-three week timeframe, which seems like we're coming up on it, they hopefully will finish a study, a study order to find out what is best for that property. Typically, what happens when the state owns a piece of property like that, they'll go around to the other agencies throughout the state, which my understanding right now is no other state agency has shown any interest in this property. By that default, if you would, that would come to the city. At that point, we would have an opportunity to look at it, find out what it would cost, do a study order, similar to what we've done over at the Lowell District Court on Heard Street.
If I may, so-
Yes.
The District Court on Heard Street was eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, was your assessment? Does that sound right? Or if it's wrong, you can correct me, but I thought it was somewhere around a little bit less than a million bucks to purchase it from the state.
Council, I'd have to get back to you on the number that, because we're still, two different pieces. Heard Street, we are talking about partnering with the state to do some of the affordable homeownership programs that the council has been discussing. So, that is still in play, and what's really truly in play about that is the actual cost at the end of the day. Because we've been working hand and glove, if you would, with DCAM on this, there's an opportunity that we might be into a cost sharing, excuse me, a revenue sharing piece when we go to sell that. So, I wish I could pull the number, but I think it was more along the lines of a million, but I could be, I could stand corrected on that.
I remember it as eight-fifty, but someone, I mean, it's fine. So, my, the concern obviously is Superior Court is four or five times the size as Heard Street.
Superior Court, when we had the opportunity to walk through it with DCAM, it presents many challenges. It's a great building. It's a strong building. Once they come back and ask us to, ask the rest of the agencies, which, once again, under my understanding, they've all passed on it, we would have an opportunity to enter into discussions with DCAM to purchase it for, you know, a dollar to millions. It would just depend on what was needed in that particular building. So, my hope is that they're going to come back and show us some of the challenges that are in the building, what they think it should be done, and we'll have a further discussion here with the council as to what should happen. Little bit different on the Heard Street property?
We're farther along on Heard Street.
We're much further along on the Heard, on the Heard Street property. That's correct. This council actually reignited that. That was about to go out to bid. We almost passed on it, and this council made a decision to make some changes. So, Heard Street is in the process, and once again, I'm working on their weeks, their schedule. I do think that we'll hear from them soon. And in regards to Superior Court, that is, the best I could describe that as a work in progress as to where they think it should, what they think it should be, what they think it could be, and some of the challenges. So, once again, on the Superior Court side, we're waiting on them, and DCAM has been absolutely fabulous to work with in both manners, at the Heard Street location as well as Superior Court on Gorm Street.
So, a few months ago, there was an agency that came before our boards looking for Superior Courthouse to, I guess, for a rehabilitation, you know, drugs, alcohol, addiction, things like that, and that fell through.
If I may, so the District Court on Heard Street was, $850,000 was your assessment? Does that sound right? Or if it's wrong, you can correct me. But I thought it was somewhere around a little bit less than a million bucks to purchase it from the state.
Counselor, I'd have to get back to you on the number that, because we're still two different pieces. Heard Street, we are talking about partnering with the state to do some of the affordable homeownership programs that the counsel has been discussing. So, that is still in play. And what's really truly in play about that is the actual cost at the end of the day. Because we've been working hand in glove, if you would, with DCAM on this, there's an opportunity that we might be into a cost sharing, excuse me, a revenue sharing piece when we go to sell that. So, I wish I could pull the number, but I think it was more along the lines of a million, but I could stand corrected on that.
I remember it as 850, but someone, I mean, it's fine. The concern obviously is Superior Court is four or five times the size as Heard Street.
Superior Court, when we have the opportunity to walk through it with DCAM, it presents many challenges. It's a great building. It's a strong building. Once they come back and ask us to ask the rest of the agencies, which, once again, under my understanding, they've all passed on it, we would have an opportunity to enter into discussions with DCAM to purchase it for, you know, a dollar to millions. It would just depend on what was needed in that particular building. So, my hope is that they're going to come back and show us some of the challenges that are in the building, what they think it should be done, and we'll have a further discussion here with the counsel as to what should happen. Little bit different on the Heard Street property?
We're farther along on Heard Street.
We're much further along on the Heard Street property. That's correct. This counsel actually reignited that. That was about to go out to bid. We almost passed on it and this counsel made a decision to make some changes. So, Heard Street is in the process and, once again, I'm working on their weeks, their schedule. I do think that we'll hear from them soon. And in regards to Superior Court, that is, the best I could describe that as a work in progress as to where they think it should, what they think it should be, what they think it could be, and some of the challenges. So, once again, on the Superior Court side, we're waiting on them and DCAM has been absolutely fabulous to work with in both manners, at the Heard Street location as well as Superior Court on Gorm Street.
So, a few months ago, there was an agency that came before our boards looking for Superior Courthouse to, I guess, for a rehabilitation, you know, drugs, alcohol addiction, things like that. And that fell through. So, how could an outside agency come in and go through that process without, I guess, knowing if it's even for auction or not, or if we own it or whatnot? So, my only concern is, you know, the thought of motion is very good, is are we pigeonholing ourselves with one idea? You know, if CTI came in tomorrow and said, "We want to buy it. We want to do A, B, C, and D," you know, are they eligible to do so? Or, you know, I guess, I know in the process that we're in right now, how early are we in it? If it's only two, three weeks away, you know, are we, is this getting ahead of the game a little bit? Should we wait till it's back in two or three weeks? And we had a lot of executive session talks about Heard Street. Is that something that we should be doing with this as well? Not to say this motion should be in there, but again, to pigeonhole in one idea, again, which is fine to talk about and start a discussion, I kind of jump in the gun a little bit.
Once again, I'd like to break both up for a moment. On the Heard Street manner, matter, excuse me, on the Heard Street matter, which is a former district court, which you know very well, working there, that particular piece, I'm hoping to hear back very soon from DCAM so that we can move forward. We'd have to have an executive session to make those decisions as to what would happen next. Once again, my hope and desire would be in the next couple of weeks. In regards to Superior, I don't think we're too early to have this discussion, but in regards to Superior Court, talking to Commissioner Gladstone, Karen Gladstone, who we've worked together with in the past, she is very committed. Once again, the order of operation would be checking with all other agencies. Those agencies say no. And then, the second step would be whether this city council decides to say yes or no. So, maybe that the other folks that were maybe a little over their skis, getting a little ahead of themselves. But once again, if it was, I'll say a CTI, just because Ms. Frederick is here and that was the wish of the counsel, I think that's something that we could move forward on. So, I want to be very careful how I say this. We do have, I think we're in a good position with the state. The state, once again, all of the state agencies get an opportunity and the second matter is the city. The city then gets an opportunity. And once, if and when we waive that, that particular piece would go to a public auction. And public auction might be the correct word, or just an auction in general. So, I think we're, but I think in regards to this motion, I think it's going to continue the discussion. Shall it be decided over at Gorm Street? Should, we've had multiple discussions and I've been out, you know, with Tewksbury State Hospital. Are there other opportunities throughout this greater Lowell community as to where we could be? I think the motion could still conjure up a lot of discussion, a lot of things, and it gives me an opportunity, once again, to talk to some of my partners, some of our partners, the town managers throughout the greater Lowell area.
So, I would ask in the response that we get a definite answer on Tewksbury. There's about, I think, three or four motions filed on Tewksbury State Hospital over the past 12, 15 months that I think we need an answer to, to piggyback off of Counselor Mercer. You know, we need to know what Tewksbury, what kind of partner they want to be in regards to what we have here. And also, you know, if there are city-owned properties, or as you said before, with our neighboring cities and towns, what other locations are available. Let's not just keep it to Superior Court building. You know, let's see what's out there for actuality, you know, timeframes and whatnot. You know, and appreciate everybody's concern about the location of it. You know, let's expand it to see what's available, what can be done. And I really stress and request that we get an answer on Tewksbury State. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. That is correct, Counselor. I've been talking to Counselor Robinson about this. There are some monies that have been put forth. I have had a discussion. The governor, as well as Lieutenant Governor, were just in town and this was a topic of discussion on a side note, having this, how important this is, as well as meeting up with the new Secretary of Housing, which is extremely important. These discussions will continue and I think this is just another opportunity. I think that this particular motion, once again, gives me an opportunity to say, the city council here in Lowell is looking to do something and we're willing to participate. And I know that we have partners like Ms. Frederick and some of our other partners. So, I think this is a good opportunity for us to continue to move forward.
I think everything that Counselors Robinson gets you looking for is already at Tewksbury State Hospital. So, I think that's where the stress of, you know, and I constantly drink water, filed motions on this, I think myself, and Justice Justice filed motions on this. So, you know, some answer either way, I think will be very beneficial. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate this motion being brought forward. I think anytime that there is a vacant property within the city, we absolutely have to be looking at it with an eye on if it can provide housing and particularly when that's a public asset, in this case, owned by the state. So, as we've just heard, that is happening. And I think, you know, acknowledging all the challenges that the building has, I think it's very appropriate that we're looking at that to see if it might present a possible solution to provide individuals with housing which they desperately need. One thing I do want to emphasize, though, is that often in these discussions, there is a tendency to think about the issue of homelessness in the city, just with the homeless individuals that we see on a regular basis, those sleeping outside and those suffering from addiction. And as Ms. Frederick had stated in her remarks, there are many more individuals in this community who are experiencing homelessness, who we don't see and who have been placed into housing in Lowell and in surrounding communities with very little fanfare or people noticing. And so, this extends beyond just the, you know, the people that we might see every day. There's people in this community who are sleeping on couches or sleeping in cars and they're going to work during the day and they're coming home without housing. So, those are also individuals in this community who desperately need some form of housing. If this particular public asset can be used for any segment of our population here in the city that's in need of housing, I think it absolutely should be looked at. I also appreciate the number of my colleagues here this evening who have mentioned, once again, Tewksbury State Hospital. Both these assets that we're discussing here tonight are assets of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I think Tewksbury State Hospital does present a very compelling location, both for the amount of space that's available, its ownership by the Commonwealth, and also the access it has to different services that could be utilized for those needing, you know, healthcare or addiction treatment or things like that. So, I appreciate that has been brought back to the forefront. I absolutely think it's part of the discussion. But I'm glad to hear that there's already conversations, a motion to address any potential that might exist for the, you know, the potential of this Superior Courthouse being utilized as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Karen Frederick from CTI. I know that others out there, especially the nonprofit organization who are very experienced and talented and understand the issue, have done so much around these issues already that could have been here and speak or in support of this motion. This motion is, you know, both Counselor Robinson and Counselor Kuchia are very carefully in framing these motions to include a number of factors, mental health, substance, and maybe those who doesn't have mental health or substance either. And this also include, at the end of it, talk about homelessness and housing crisis impact our community. And the managers alluded to, last week, last Thursday, the governors and Lieutenant Governors and the Secretary of Housing came. The state appropriated $246 million to build 1,600 housing unit in the Commonwealth. And that's not going to be the end of it because this is not going to go away. Homelessness is not somebody all issue and it's not going to go away. And homelessness required building a collaboration on both front, local, meaning working with our local nonprofit partner to resolve the flight of homelessness in the city. And maybe also regional. And, you know, my colleague talking about Tewksbury State Hospital, we talked about that for a numbers of months already. And, you know, we certainly do need to work with not just regional, state, and federal to address this issue. And this may be, maybe this building is a start, a start in addressing more of these issues in our city. And so, I thank both of my colleagues for bringing this motion up. And when you bring this motion up, and now that the DCAM own it, both the District Court and the Superior Court and the District Court, it seemed like, you know, we are ahead of it. And Superior Court, one, we say we are interested, we want to talk about this building, working with our partner to do something here and with the support of the state and maybe federal, maybe is, this building is a start to more of this. And maybe is, down the road, we can do something with Tewksbury State Hospital as well. So, this, we need to do everything possible to address these issues because it's come up all the time and it's not going to go away, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a little concern about the wording in the motion, exploring the possibility of a pilot program. I'm a little confused whether or not the plan that we're looking for is permanent supportive housing, as was mentioned by our speaker, or if this is more of a temporary mental health, substance abuse, like a homeless shelter type of situation. I'm not sure what the intentions were of the makers. One way I could support it, the other way I can't. So, I was just curious if there'd be any clarification around that. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. For clarification purposes, let's look at it on ground level. We have a massive facility that's empty that the state owns right now. We can all agree, we've identified homelessness, housing crisis, mental health, substance abuse, four major impacts to our community, societal problems. I'm no professional in this field by any stretch. I'm viewing this massive vacant property as an opportunity. And I'm glad, I'm hearing the concerns. Are we a little early? What is the intended purpose of this? To be honest, I don't know. I don't think any of us have those answers right now. I think that's why we're looking to explore the feasibility. I think that's why we're looking to bring community partners to the table and let them tell us what kind of model can we fit in this space? What kind of programming would work and be the most efficient with minimal impact to the surrounding neighborhood and environment as well as put a dent in this problem? Whether it ends up being long-term supportive housing with some mental health and substance abuse clinicians that visit or are stationed there, I don't know. But we'll never find those answers unless we begin these conversations. And so, if DCAM says this is surplus and we get offered the opportunity, how can I expect my colleagues or the community to even begin these conversations if it's a time-sensitive matter? So, that's why we're looking to get the right people to the table and have these conversations to kind of come up with a concept and a pilot. What makes sense here? If the money fell from the sky tomorrow and we know the square footage of this property, that's what we do know for sure, what makes sense to put under that roof and these four walls? And how do we do so with the outcome is addressing any of these four or all of these four, or any combination of the four? Another thing that's been overlooked, the sheriff's office. They have earmark currently from Congresswoman Trehan's office. They're focusing on diversion, diversion and working with some of this population to alleviate. They're looking for a home. I mean, what this ends up looking like as far as the drawing board goes? Let's get to the table and throw the lump of clay in the middle and everyone's hands will sculpt what we think would be the best fit for our community. And that's why it's called a pilot. Because there isn't really anything in the state that has this kind of opportunity that they were able to kind of custom build out and then present. Because none of us know how this is going to go. We could come up with what we all think is the best model to try, pitch it to the people that have the checkbooks and not receive any funding and it's dead in the water. So, that's why this is worded the way it is. I'm identifying what all of my colleagues here have talked about, including the administration and all of our community partners. These four issues that we're seeing, that we're losing the fight on, point blank, I hear, not in my neighborhood. Well, take a walk down a block from there. I could probably go purchase any drug I wanted, unfortunately, right now. It's, that area is already dealing with some of these issues. So, instead of saying, "Not here, let's look elsewhere," we don't have the authority to tell another community. And I'm not the type of person that wants to sit around until another community decides they want to help us because we have a vacant building here and we have a problem here. All four of these areas are problems here. So, either we're going to look for and wish upon a star for the next community to step up and help us, or we're going to try to take some proactive steps and identify something we can do. And then, again, this is just ground level, infancy stages. You have to crawl before you walk. Let's get the right people to the table to figure out first and foremost, what kind of model would even make sense in this facility before we worry about steps two through 100. And so, it's tough to sit here and try to pitch a model. I don't have a diagram, a sketch, or even what we're seeing, but you've heard from, as I mentioned, one professional in the field that's in the trenches on this. Maybe this is long-term supportive housing. If that's something that we could go out and acquire funding for and work with community partners, then I guess the model would be long-term supportive housing. If it's going to be transitional housing and long-term supportive, and then Tewksbury State wants to step up and do all of the entry-level triage up until you go through your crisis stabilization and all those, maybe that's what it looks like. But let's at least figure out what would work for our community in this facility that's sitting empty right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was handed a note by one of the people in the chamber here who was texted by the people at home watching this, and LTC went out for almost my entire comments. I was asked to say everything again, but I'm not going to burden you to do that. But I just want you to know that it's rebroadcasted tomorrow at noon time. If anybody missed out on anything that I said, which I think it was very, very important. But the fact is, which is just my opinion, but anyway, I just wanted to say, isn't it amazing that LTC goes out, but it's rebroadcasted in its entirety? Why don't they just bypass this and broadcast it in its entirety? But anyway, so, it's rebroadcasted tomorrow at noon time. Thank you.
And your comment is worth re-listening to, Counselor.
It is, yes. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I think a lot of good points were brought up tonight. This is a good motion to explore. And what it does is what many of us said, is it creates a lot of opportunity here. It creates opportunity for jobs to fix the buildings up, creates jobs after the building is fixed up, for whatever purpose it's running at. It creates opportunities for someone to purchase it and take it over from the state, if it's a state-run project or if it's public-private project. Creates opportunity and jobs and it's going to house people if it turns into housing. We have mentioned a lot over the last few months about sending people over to Tewksbury State Hospital. That's where they belong, in a hospitalized, in a hospital situation, if they have an addiction, mental health crisis, mental health problems. So, I think this is a good opportunity. We've all talked to our state reps over the last year about what they can do. Now, we're saying, you know, we're tired of waiting. We want some action and that's what brings these motions up. So, it's a good opportunity tonight to get the ball rolling again, get the conversation out there. Nothing is set in stone to bring anything into any type of neighborhood, but again, this is an opportunity that we can explore to help people and that's what we're here for. So, I appreciate all the comments tonight. Thank you to the Speaker and thank you for the makers of the motion.
Counselor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go over one more thing about the homeless in downtown and the social services and everything that's down there. Number one, we have public transportation down there. We have a school department down there. We have social security down there. We have the Salvation Army down there. We have the Career Center down there. We have the homeless shelter down there. The courthouse is down there. UTEC is down there. And there's more to... is down there, UTEC is down there, and there's more to that. So you got food, shelter, and help. They're not going to Westfield, they're not going to Tuxbury. They can check themselves out as quick as you check them in. It's a great idea, but these places have to go with it. People need social security numbers, they need food, they need all of these services, they're all downtown and they're all rented out by private owners of these buildings. So the challenge is, how do we bring something closer that actually can help people get better? That's the challenge. That's why we look to these areas, we're saying, okay, if there's another building down there, I'm all for it, but I just look around and say, these are the things that are down there, and you're going to go to food, shelter, and help. And this city was extremely kind, and everything is down there. Yes, we have a homeless situation. Look at all the services that are down there. You don't find that anyplace else.
Thank you, Counselor. If there are no other comments or questions from the Counselors, I just want to make a brief comment from up here, and I want to say, this is a great motion, and from the discussion that all the Counselors have mentioned, is that we agree on that this needs to happen. We're exploring a solution for a, for a problem, for a crisis in our city, and so we, we agree that this is a good solution. We agree that this is a good motion. We might have various opinion on where it should go, but I'm glad Counsel Robinson, Counsel Gishia listed the Superior Courthouse as, as one of the buildings. Just to start, as a starting point of a conversation, a starting point for feasibility, where it could go, and based on all the Counselors' comments, suggestions, and Mr. Managers' suggestions as well, is to also explore other buildings as well, whether it's Tuxbury Hospital, 100 Staple Street, Stackpole, or any other buildings within the city that we can look at, but I think the courthouse is, is a good starting point, as well as to include many of the buildings that the Counselors have mentioned. So I think we can agree on that. If that is okay, I don't think we need to do a, a roll call, we can do a voice vote to pass this motion, through how the City Manager's Office, to look at different possibilities on this pilot program, and which building will be best suited for this type of program. If there are no other comments or questions, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Robinson?
Since we're on this, can we, under suspension, can we just take 7.3 also, please, out of order?
Motion by Counsel Robinson to take item 7.3 out of order, second by Counselor Janess. Motion 7.3 is Counsel Robinson requests the mayor create a restorative center ad hoc committee focused on exploration, on utilizing the Superior Courthouse property. Second, by Counsel Janess, already. Do we have a right to speak on this one? Mr. Clark?
No.
Here, non, Counsel Robinson?
The reason I want to take this out is because after the last discussion we had, I think this is a means to, to begin the conversation in a formal manner, and at least try to develop a concept idea. So that way, with this ad hoc, if and when the time ever presents itself for the city to begin deliberations on our own, as to yea or nay whether we want to pretty much take ownership of this property, if that opportunity presents itself, at least let's start the conversations and see, so we can get a jumpstart for ourself on, on what does the idea even look like? So that way, we're not kind of looking at a vacant property with, with no real tangible ideas behind it. So I, I just think it will make the process a little easier for us to make an informed decision as to, is this something to even really consider if that time or opportunity presents itself?
Counsel Loeb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great idea. If and when we do that, Mr. Mayor, if you decide to do that, you know, I urge that you include the nonprofit, or who has experience and talent and understanding these issues and how to do it best. Well, tonight you have CTI directors here, so maybe she volunteered herself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Again, thank you, Counsel Robinson, for your comment on the Superior Courthouse as a starting point. It could be in the buildings that the ad hoc may identify later on. After you made no other questions or comments, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Counsel Leahy, your comment?
No, just while we're on the suspension, let's just finish the two motions and be done with them.
Okay. This motion is passed. We now, Counselor Leahy requests to suspend the rule to take the rest of the motion out of order and discuss right now, second by Counselor Gishia. I think we, let's just go with the first motion then, Counselor. Motion 7.1, Counselor Gishia requests City Manager have the police department provide extra patrols, the, the car wash located 81 Rogers Street, second by Counselor Scott, Counsel Gishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I'd like to also add to this motion, the North Common, if that's possible for the rest of the Council, but we end up getting a lot of calls, and I know Counsel Scott has addressed this, and, and many of the other Counselors have, have tried to push this, and have spoken to the manager. The noise down there, now that it's getting warmer out, you're getting noise, you're getting loud exhaust, you're getting kids pulling wheelies down there, drinking, there's a lot of things going on in the property, and, and I understand it's privately owned, but I think we need to just get in there and patrol more. The North Common, the same thing's happening down there, where kids are causing problems, and now you're getting youth activities going on down there, and there are issues going on. If, if we can please, I know in the past, the police department used to have extra patrols in what they called hot areas, but through time, those things got pushed away or, or done away with. Would it be something that you could come back with a report, or, or could you come back with a report that would show where those hot areas are and how we're, we plan to address them, where we cut out some of the services that used to go there in these hot areas, such as the North Common and, and places like that? Because they definitely need it, you're seeing these things go on more and more, and I think it, it's the ripe time, because we're starting to see warmer weather and things happening. So if we could just look at that in the North Common, that would make sense to me. Thank you.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have had many residents reach out to me as far as Faulkner Street about the noise level that happens at the car wash. I did reach out to the Chief of Police a few times about this property. I don't know, it's, when I went by there multiple times, there were probably 40, 50 people hanging out out back, drinking, smoking, just, it was just a hangout. They weren't washing their vehicles at all. They did break it up multiple times, but the neighbors say that this is just like this almost every night of the week all summer long. I don't know if there's more that needs to be done than just the police breaking it up, if there's some responsibility for the business owner to have it staffed, or a security guard, or, or maybe to limit the hours, they're open, I think, 24 hours there, but, so I think there's multiple things we could be looking at. Thank you.
Counsel Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along that line, I received complaint from residents and the coaches of the softball at the North Common concerning some of the activities, including knives and drugs, activities, and guns. At the North Common, there is a parking lot behind the swimming pool across the street from Market Basket off of Broadway. That's a really hot spot, so I reached out to Assistant City Manager Machado to ask to pass that along to the chief, to have a police officer, you know, patrol the area time to time to kind of be sure it's safe, because the kids are playing softball, baseball at the North Common there, so, and Assistant Managers Machado told me that he passed the word along to the chief already, so I'm grateful, and I pass along to our resident who expressed the concern, to let them know that the police had been notified, and they will see some patrol and make them feel safe when they have the games going at the North Common. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. The next motion, and the last motion, is motion number 7.4. It's a motion by Counsel Robinson to request City Manager have DPD provide GIS mapped report on potential number, as well as locations of ADUs if proposed change were to be adopted, second by Counsel Drinkwater, Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I brought this up in the subcommittee. Basically, I know it's impossible to identify any internal ADU units if this was to pass. This is more in regards to the piece that's in the draft, where external buildings that, that would fit the criteria to be converted. So I, I figured that would be pretty easy for GIS to be able to spit out, because you are, if that's up, up and running right now. I mean, I understand if not, it's, we're getting back to walking, so it's no rush, but I just asked this in the subcommittee, and I'd, I'd like to see a preliminary number at least, to see a starting point. Thank you.
Here, non, on favor, Counsel Gishia?
Yeah, I think this is a good motion, because last night I was at the zoning board meeting, and when you look at some of the things that are going on, building in this city, and when you were looking at ADUs and we're looking at everything, 4,000 square foot lot, doesn't meet six requirements, it needs six variances. We sat there, and the problem with the zoning board is, the people who speak never get to speak after, so they question each other and it walks away. If they can meet one parking spot, there's an ADU on a 4,000 square foot lot that's seven and a half feet away from another house, and that's what they're proposing to, to build, and it goes back and forth. There is no reason why these things should be happening in our city, and when, and this is a good motion, because I would love to see all of these undersized lots that were built on, that got variances to build, and now they'll fit into the qualifications of some of this, which makes it even worse for these neighbors. 27 neighbors signed a petition. They had the wrong lawyer, because they didn't have one, and the board basically said it's okay for many, many years to overgrow your property, not maintain it, and what the solution is, let's just build a house, because that'll maintain it better than it's being maintained now. That's not the answer. The answer is, we need to inspect these things and start fining people for not taking care of their property. And I think this management team is doing that by walking neighborhoods and starting to get into this, but the solution is not having zoning board members say, well, since they didn't take care of their property for this many years, it's okay, we'll just let them build on it, because that's the easy solution out. That's not what this city should be about in zoning. They're there to regulate zoning laws. And now we look at ADUs, so we don't know. My question is the same one that Counsel Robinson has, how many of these properties that a single family were built with variances, and what were those variances, and how are they going to fit into this ADU system? So I think we need to know a lot more than what we actually know today, because these neighbors are not going to get what, what they're being sold. Thank you.
I just want to be clear, and perhaps just the, the maker of the motion could, could clarify. I appreciated, actually, the, the clarity that was provided in the remarks, that this related to detached units, so properties that had an existing detached unit that could potentially fit the criteria to be converted to an ADU, not to look at each and every single-family home within the city. I, I just wanted to clarify that that was the intent of, of the motion.
Counsel Robinson?
Yeah, like I mentioned, this, I figured GIS would be able to pick up on, because part of the draft says, if you have an exterior like garage or something, it's, I think, 10 years old, it has to be minimum requirement. So, I mean, I think those would be pretty easy to identify through GIS, once we get that capability. It's, it's, this is looking at the detached component with the single-family properties that would meet the criteria in the draft, when we can, and that's just to give us a starting point, because right now, none of us know, potentially, how many would even be eligible to do this. So at least we have one piece of data, if, if we can get this report eventually. Thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater, y'all set?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
That's not what the motion reads. The motion reads, request the City Manager have the DPD provide GIS mapping, report on potential number, as well as locations of ADUs if proposed changes were to be adopted. It doesn't say about anything else, so I want to clarify that that's not what the motion reads. It, to clarify something that's other than what's written on paper, it's tough for any of us to look at, but it's, what the motion says is something different than, so if we're going to amend the, the motion, then that's probably what we'd do if that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Yeah, if we need to amend it, I mean, because we'll never be able to identify from GIS, how many potential ADUs could be done in basements, attics, whatever else fit criteria, but I figured GIS mapping would be able to identify single-family detached garage, because that is part of the ordinance, and, and like I mentioned, it would give us a starting number, at least that component that would be eligible would be identified for the most part. The additional ADUs, that's, if you have a way that we could identify all the other potentials, that'd be great, but I, I don't even understand how we'd be able to identify attics, basements, and all these other things. So this is in regards to using GIS in a detached garage structure.
So the amendment, second by Counsel Rourke, and Mr. Clark has made the note, and I think if there's any further clarification, as the report comes out, you can speak with the Manager's Office. Any other comments or questions? Here, non, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. That completes the, the motion for the night. We now go back, return to where we left off in the motion response. We're going to go back to the alphabet B on the 4.1. This is on paying air co-working. Any comment, Counsel Janess or Counsel Robinson? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for this report. I think this is an interesting idea, and I'd love to see where we can go with it in the future. I understand that, you know, we have other higher priorities and other things that have our attention right now, but I just thought this was a very cool idea and something that could really increase the, the vitality of our city. So hopefully someday we'll be able to play with this and see what we can do with it. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleague, you know, I think these, and I'd also like to thank the administration. One thing I'd like to point to, the public should pay attention to this, because one of the things this administration, and, and I'm thankful for, has been very open-minded, in my experience with, is quality of life issues. We put this forward because we see this is getting the community out into our public space, utilizing space that might not be utilized otherwise for productive purposes. We put the motion forward, and immediately, we get, we get a real good, solid response in, in their eagerness, almost on the same page to, yes, we're working towards getting our residents and giving our residents and our guests great opportunity to get out in the public sectors. So I think this is great, and I think this kind of bundles in with a lot of things that we've been talking about all along. Something the city's currently working on with some community partners, even experienced law. These are the kind of projects that, that kind of lend itself to an experience our city can provide to our residents and our guests. And, and yes, we have some higher prioritized housekeeping issues that need to happen before we can start implementing these kind of projects, but this kind of is, is, this is motivation to show that the administration and their team, as long as, as well as this council, is willing to, to produce and provide different experiences and different opportunities for our residents and guests. So, I mean, unfortunately, some people like to say, you know, this is crazy, this is crazy, but you know what? This not only provides our residents and guests an opportunity to get out of a traditional working office space, it also stimulates some economic growth and development, if you think about it, because chances are, if you're in the middle of downtown or a neighborhood, you're going to walk to grab a coffee, or you might grab lunch, you're going to spend some money in a local small business, and then utilize this workspace and be out in your community. So I think these small, small, outside-the-box ideas pay big dividends. The return on investment on this is a quality of life issue, and, and I applaud the administration and their team for such a prompt response and the willingness to, to get to yes. Thank you.
No other comments? The next motion response is on Open Street. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Again, back-to-back, another example of the administration and the council, my colleagues working to get to yes on, on issues that we can provide our residents and our guests opportunity to get out in public space and enjoy each other, enjoy company, enjoy quality of life. We see it. I'm sure we've all, at one point in time, attended another community where it was pedestrian-only areas, and it's a great time. And, and again, it spurs economic growth, it spurs economic development, and it enhances and shows and, and puts what Lowell has to experience, offer for an experience, on a stage. And so these are the kind of initiatives that I'm going to continuously work with my colleagues and this administration to bring forward, because I think our, our city deserves it, and, and if we're looking to reinvent ourselves and show people all we have to offer, these are some of the ways that we're going to be able to do that. So thank you.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the administration for the response, and my colleague for bringing this forward. I really, I'm excited that NemCog is jumping in and really wants to, you know, get their hands dirty with this, because I think they have a lot of skills to lend us as we go towards this. As Council Robinson just said, this is something that many other cities have tried and been extremely successful with. So I'm really excited for us to give it a shot and see what we can do with it. Next year feels far away, but it's not. And, you know, in a perfect world, we'd try something out later this summer or fall, but I don't know if that's possible, but I'd love to see us do something small-scale, just to prove we can this year. But either way, I'm excited to work towards this and looking forward to when we can implement it. Thank you.
Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, my colleague, Council Robinson, for putting this up. We were, we saw that in Montreal. I know the report talked about the money. I mean, the money, the root cause of what can be done or cannot be done, but however, in, I have friends who own businesses, and the, businesses allow their patron to use the internet. So that's, the Xfinity will provide that. The Xfinity would say you want to provide a hotspot for your customer. So maybe working with the small businesses in downtown part of the city of Lowell, and provide some additional, some fund to also to allow the customer or the lot they day to have the Wi-Fi as part of the visiting downtown. So I remember traveling, sometime we don't have internet, so pull into a parking lot at a hotel or something and try to use a Wi-Fi that way. So it's a lot of people come downtown and they go to local restaurant. Local restaurant will provide that kind of a hotspot Wi-Fi for the customer. So maybe working with the small businesses and provide some incentive for the small businesses to provide that kind of Wi-Fi and workforce. So the city doesn't have to do it all ourselves, but working with the small businesses downtown to provide this kind of, that Council Robinson motion is. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments. The next motion response is alphabet D on the Lowell experience. Council Robinson?
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank, you know, obviously, the many people that have contributed to this response. I mean, it's exciting to see we're starting to look and understand what we need to do to kind of pull ourselves out of this Lowell that every community's pretty much experienced since the pandemic, you know? I'm thankful some of our community partners have really grabbed the bull by the horns and are often running with it in Mosaic Lowell amongst many that has been really instrumental in pushing all of these activities, you know? This is great. I think we need to desperately, immediately create a think tank or a board, kind of appointed by the city manager, and that's what the ask on the motion, initial motion that Council Yem and I put forward was, because, the reason I say that, when you think of an experience, it's everything that goes into that you encounter. So we could have our community partners put together the best event with the best musicians, with the best actors, a play, or whatever it may be. We might draw some tourists in. Now, what they experience, the time they hit our city line to that draw, and then by the time they go home, that's going to make the difference. That's going to keep them coming back, or force them to reconsider and not come back. More importantly, our residents that live here, our business owners that invest in our community, what is their experience? And so I think that's the best kind of marketing or advertising any community could ask for, is if you have residents and business owners and students and employees and the people that make the wheels turn, sort of say, in the city, tourists and visitors are going to want to be a part of that naturally. And all of this comes down to, what kind of experience are we creating for everybody involved? And so I think we really need to sit down with people at the table, part of this commission that we requested, and make sure, because about 85% of this heavy lift is going to fall smack dab on the city's shoulders, whether it's DPD, DPW, whether it's, I mean, you name it. This is kind of a mindset and mentality that we're going to have to try to adopt in everything that we do. How clean are our streets? How's the signage on our streets? Are the crosswalks clearly marked? Is there plenty of signage? Is it well-lit? Is it safe? Is there plenty of foot patrols? When people come to do something in our city, what is that like? What's their experience? We have the universities, we have Middlesex Community College. What's the kids that are visiting for school? What's their experience? We have plenty of people that come in for the registry from out of town. What's their experience like? All of this factors in and encompasses what we need to be mindful of if we're going to start using experienced Lowell. And I think we need to formulate a plan with ownership and responsibilities with many different partners to try to improve upon that experience. So when people think about Lowell, they say, wow, they've really changed. They're putting out good quality entertainment, great quality food, their culture's on display. I love going down to the markets. I love whatever draw that we all appreciate and value. The only way we're going to be able to put that on display for the rest of the people around in the surrounding communities is cleaning up our own house. And that goes with creating a positive experience from the candy wrapper on the ground to the graffiti being sprayed on a bridge. All of that stuff is going to lend itself to somebody's experience in our city. And I think this is something that we can really, if we can embrace this and commit to this, I think we have an opportunity to really transform the way our city is viewed, at least Merrimack Valley statewide and beyond, because we have a lot to offer. So I think we need to really start figuring out, how do we clean up all the in-between pieces? Thank you.
Peter, do you have something to add? You're good? Any other comments or questions? Council Leahy?
Yeah, just very quickly, I think this is a good motion response, and this is exactly what the new manager and his team have been saying. Also, I love your response of, did you not see it, or did you just not care? So this is what we're trying to change in the city, and we're trying to clean it up, and we're trying to get people to participate and have ownership. So I love that expression. It's well-needed, and thank you, Mr. Manager.
No other comments. The next motion response is alphabet E on bi-weekly conversion. Council Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to City Auditor Kelly Oak. Thank you for your motion response. I remember, or at least I understand, you office and CFO many months ago proposed this idea of, you know, having payroll being bi-weekly, and I remember a lot of people have questions and concern and unhappy about it. And, you know, and I see it, you know, since you implemented this, that you make your department run more efficient and more effective and free your time up, actually, to do more proactive things, right? So I'm happy to see that. I'm also happy to, in the motion response, the third paragraph, you said you want to acknowledge or recognize one of your staff, and I think, you know, I want to say this in open, that the person that you named is Emma S. Metcity. And thank you for, thank her for, and her team for the hard work and make this work. So again, thank you for what you do to make this department, the audit department, is to work more efficient and more effective. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Thank you very much, Council, for that. I do have to say, this has been seven years in the making, and I have to congratulate Ms. Oaks and the entire team down there for doing this, because there was a tremendous amount of pushback, and I have to say that, I don't want to say nobody was missed. I know that we had a couple of hiccups, but as far as taking a situation that has been in the system for seven years, that every year we meant to do it, we meant to do it, I just have to really take this and this opportunity to thank the entire auditing team. I also want to thank the entire auditing team. Over the past four weeks, it's been no secret, we have been challenged, we've had issues, we've had major challenges, and every one of the employees that we have here in the city have been paid. And that needs to be noticed by, I know, the entire council. Each council has called me and said, what a miraculous job that over the past few weeks has happened. And that is from the leadership, right from Mr. Baldwin to Ms. Oaks, to that entire team. So I just want to say, on behalf of the administration as a whole, thank you and thank your entire team for not only implementing something that had eluded the city for quite a few years, and making it happen, and making it as smooth as possible, but also making sure the last four weeks has been just as smooth. So thank you very much, Ms. Oaks.
Councilor Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. Have all of the employees since this haven't been paid on time in their hours? Because what we're hearing is the police department hasn't been paid their holiday pay from Patriots' Day, and I'm not sure that that's true or not true, but, and also details haven't been paid for five weeks or so. So people are saying that they're not getting paid their details, and there's something, an issue with their holiday pay from that time, but the fire department ended up getting paid their holiday pay from Patriots' Day. Is that something that's valid or not valid? Do you know?
Through Mr. Manager, through Ms. Oak.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for that. That was really, really nice. But as far as the payroll during this time, so the fire department was paid the holiday pay. As for police, that is, it could very well be true. I know the budget director over police, as well as the payroll staff, they had to adjust without the use of Laramore, so they probably have not paid it, but there's certainly no reason not to pay. We could help them through that. Special details have not been paid to police because of the Laramore situation. Apparently, it's instrumental in order for them to get that, all of that in there, so they could account for everything and bill it, and then submit it for payroll.
I thought that everyone was paid up to date. This is a major issue with a lot of their families, because they live paycheck to paycheck, they go out there, they hit those details, and I'm not even sure that the manager knew any of this until now. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The, in regards to the details, details are paid every 30, they're paid 30 days, because what happens in the Laramore system is, my understanding is, pick National Grid, for instance, when the officer goes out, there's a provision within the CBA that says that will be paid within 30 days. And Laramore has been down, now Laramore is back up. And we are in the process of, obviously, rectifying that situation. But when it comes to details, and I'm only, I'm not picking on anybody, it could be, you know, Tom's a paving company, the Laramore system sends out the dollar figure that is owed because of it, and the money comes back, and then the money is paid out. Now, I believe that we have the force majeure, is that correct? And that will happen before the 30 days is up. And because Laramore has just gotten back up, I've been in contact with both the Patrolmen's Union and the Superior's Union, and if this had gone any further, the administration was prepared to move forward to pay them. So it's a little different. Overtime does get paid or has been paid, but in regards to the, excuse me, the detail work, detail work can at times be delayed, and it needs, but it needs to be paid per the CBA 30 days, before 30 days. So yes, it may very well be an inconvenience, I've talked to some of the officers about it, but that's really a process of the billing situation. We don't typically have this, but if this went any longer, the CFO and I were having a discussion about how to front-load, and then the city would collect the money at a later time.
I think that's the confusing thing, is because we have so many different payroll people. When you look at fire getting paid a holiday pay, and then the police aren't from five weeks ago, it's hard to see. And they're saying it's from Patriots' Day. And on the detail thing, they just said that, you know, they understand it was a 30 days, but it's over the 30-day mark. But you explain it through, I guess it's a cyber issue that is the issue. But I still think we had to find a way to pay these people if they're over the amount, over the amount of time that was due. I thank you for clarifying that, but it's hard for people who expect something on a certain day to pay their bills when they're kind of strapped for money. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that one? Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. The manager, you sent out the letter, I mean, email, saying that the school will have the MIS accessible at the regular workstation. So is that online now for the school, Munis?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Munis is up online. That's correct, Council.
Thank you.
No other comments. The next motion response is the alphabet F on 45 Merrimack Street. Council Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Assistant City Managers, Giovanni Byros. Thank you for the report, Ms. Byros. You know, we all agree, and I think this council do agree, that this project is very vital to the economic development of downtown, because this project really is access to a lot of vital areas of the city's restaurant, cafe, music venues and whatnot. So this is certainly going to bring, you know, startup, sort of encourage other developers to maybe start, you know, develop the second, third, fourth floor of their building. So, and that's why I'm asking for a report. So do we know the timeline for this project?
Giovanni?
Through you, Mayor, to the council. So the applicants have their approvals from the boards that they need to move the project forward. They've submitted an application to the state for funding, and right now that application is pending. So assuming that they're successful, they'll find out in a few months, and then we'll start actively working towards coming up with a plan for staging that construction. So right now, we're kind of in wait-and-see mode. They've done what they can up to the point of waiting for a decision on the financing.
I also want to recognize, or at least say this, that, you know, Ali Kados, the Director of Economic Development downtown, is a point person for the city. So I would ask that you give us an update on this, you know, when you have an update. Thank you.
Council Trinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question through you to the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Byasros. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the legislature about raising the cap on the H-TIP tax incentive program, and I know the city manager very presciently has weighed in, along with other gateway cities, mayors and managers, about raising the cap to allow more projects to kind of come through the pipeline, through the H-TIP tax credit. Is that part, do you know, is that part of the issue on the holdup on the approval of that particular tax credit for this project? And I don't know, if so, it might be a juncture where, you know, if there's ways for us to weigh in with the legislature, because I know both branches, I think, at one point have agreed on increasing the cap. If there's, you know, a way we can encourage that to happen, to hopefully open up the floodgates for some of these projects, that'll be helpful. But do you know, is that part of the holdup by any chance?
Giovanni?
Thank you. I have heard that, yes, the state was looking to increase the cap to try to push for try to push for additional units. But one of the issues that they've bumped up against is that a lot of previously funded projects with increased construction costs saw substantial gaps in their projects. And so the state was assessing how many projects could get funded if they were filling gaps on projects they'd already committed to previously. And so it's our understanding that that conversation is ongoing, and that is playing into DHD's timing and decision-making.
Okay. Thank you. And maybe, I know this is something that, you know, we've already weighed in on to hopefully find a resolution that can increase the cap. But certainly just if there are ways to kind of keep the pressure, or stay in conversation with our delegation to make sure that that's being pushed at the State House, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nune.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more question to Ms. Byros. So has any other property owners in downtown reached out to you in talking about this kind of incentive as well, other than the 45 Hillridge Building?
Ms. Giovanni.
Thank you. We have periodically, over time, heard from other developers that were interested in using H-DIP. There was a period of time where it wasn't as competitive of a program as it is now. And so there wasn't a limit on the number of projects that could be funded. When the resource became very popular, the state essentially made a decision that communities needed to limit their support to a single project per round. And so we have heard from a number of interested developers, as you mentioned, Counselor, the location of 45 Merrimack Street and its location within the downtown and ability to jumpstart some development in the downtown. It was a priority location for the city. But we have spoken with other developers, and we'll continue to do so. But until we hear from the state that we're allowed to support more than one project, sometimes we have to make decisions about which project we can put our support behind.
Thank you, Ms. Byros. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments. That completes all the motion responses. We now go to item 4.2, informational reports on fiscal year 2024 budget update. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. So obviously, everyone knows we've had a couple of challenging weeks here, the last four weeks. There would be a possibility, per the potential recommendation, that we could go what is referred to as 1/12 budget. However, working with CFO, Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Ball, it appears right now that is not going to be necessary if the council would like to move forward on having a special meeting on the 6th of June, as well as on the 20th of June. In the 6th of June, we would obviously bring the budget forward in its completed fashion. And from that perspective, we'd have the appropriate two weeks for everyone to review and to look at. And then on the 20th, which would be Tuesday, the 20th, we would invite all of our friends from the different departments to be here in a timely manner for any discussion point to accept or change the budget. But I feel confident that we will make the sixth deadline. Once again, one of the issues would be us trying to get it, getting the budget completed, where it'll be printed for each of the councilors, plus a few additional copies. And then after that, we will have it on the internet for the public to see. So that's the recommendation, I guess. It would be a recommendation to the mayor and the council to move on June 6th, as well as on June 20th.
Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? We need a motion to have a special meeting on June 6th and June 20th by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Mercier, on favor of the I. Post say no, the I's have it. That motion is carry. No other questions or comments on that report. We now go to the information report as well, update on Human Rights Campaigns, HRC, Municipality Equality Index. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. I want to first and foremost start off by thanking Ms. Dominguez, as well as Ms. DeRoges, for all their hard work on this. I know that we have been working on this. This is something that was brought to our attention last year, where the city of Lowell scored a 50 out of 100. I am very confident that we are in the upward motion with the hard work of Melissa and Inabell for everything they have been doing. The constant communication that they've had to discuss this Municipal Equality Index from the Human Rights Campaign has been excellent work thus far. And I know that they are still working to move forward. And another piece tomorrow, I think it is tomorrow, that the DEI officer job description will be closing. And I do know that we have multiple folks that have applied, both internally and externally. So we're moving in the right direction. And once again, a big thank you to Ms. DeRoges and Ms. Dominguez. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Manager, and your team, Melissa and Inabell. I think that taking this seriously and putting this work in is a great step for the administration and the city as a whole. Excited to see where our score goes and, you know, look at that upward trajectory and use that as a stepping stone for bigger and better things. So thank you all for putting the time in and really, really working hard at this. I think it's very important, and I appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
No other comments. That completes the motion responses and the informational report. Now the motion to accept placed on file by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Yem, on favor of the I. Post say no, the I's have it. Motion's carry. We now go to item 4.3, which is the communication. City manager requests out-of-state travel for one, not parking. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Mercier. Do you recall this, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Ruck.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gishia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
That's 10 yeas.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection, could I bundle all the votes, 5.1 to 5.5?
I second that.
Motion by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Nune. I'm going to read the votes and the dollar amount, and even as bundle. Counselor can make comments on each individual afterward. 5.1 is a vote to accept gift from the Conde family. 5.2 is a vote to apply to accept expense, CS or grant for wastewater. 5.3, vote to transfer $350,000 personal information insurance. 5.4 is a vote to transfer $394,123 regarding salaries and wages. And the last motion to bundle is 5.5, the vote transfer $707,888.16 for DPW. Any comments or questions on any of the transfer or vote? Counselor Gishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I have a couple of questions on 5.3, the transfer of the $350,000. Through you to the manager. Have we notified all the past employees of the breach in the cyber stuff, like employees who've worked here over the last three years in some form, whether it's an email, whether, have we been able to notify people who've actually worked here that this stuff could have been taken?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, no, we've had 11 communications, whether they be small or in-depth, to all of the current employees. I had an opportunity to actually speak with a couple of folks who had previously worked for the city. And the interesting conversation we had back and forth, and they understood with major companies that have been breached, the discussion went a little bit, to be honest with you, like this. They were concerned that their information might have been leaked through, obviously, the city of Lowell. And then upon further discussion, we discussed, and I don't want to kind of blame anybody else for this, because, once again, we are still working on this. This is still active. But Harvard Pilgrim Health, which is a GIC member, and it happened to be the person that I was talking to, I just happened to ask on the healthcare, you know, which healthcare do you use? And they had mentioned Harvard. And the Harvard Pilgrim Health piece, there was an interesting piece in the Globe today, I think it was today or yesterday. My apologies for not remembering the exact time. But that particular piece could have been part and parcel to this. But the city of Lowell could have been part and parcel as well. And to get out to all of the former, the former employees, that has not happened unless it's happened through various media outlets, as well as Facebook. But once again, it's hard for us to know if this has come from the city of Lowell or any one of the number of people that have been compromised.
In that, I'm not worried about compromise, not compromise. I'm just worried about people being notified. If you could ask HR to send a letter to anybody who was employed over the last three years for the city, who has had direct deposit or any type of interaction like that, that was a former employee, if we can just send out a letter to them saying, you know, we're not saying a compromise, but here's what's going on, or some kind of generic letter that at least notifies people. Because they may not be here. They may be somewhere else and not, I think it's fair that we try to reach out to some of these former employees that may not be within the city any longer, and they may be somewhere else. The other question is, when you read this memo, it says we're transferring $350,000 for the city to purchase LifeLock and identity theft software for all city employees. How much of that $350,000 is going to go to the LifeLock?
Mr. Manager.
All of it.
All of it. That's correct, Counselor. This is...
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add some clarification. The city and the schools, and Dr. Boyd has been a great partner in this, have agreed to split the cost. So the city will be paying for city employees. The school department will be effectuating a similar transfer for school department employees.
So it's $700,000 to LifeLock?
The total value of the contract, I think, is over $1 million. And so it's going to be split proportionally amongst the employee base.
Was that something that was procured? Did you go out to bid for that?
So we procured this on an emergency basis under 30B. There's an emergency provision, and we had conversations with the Inspector General's office about that.
How did we come to LifeLock is the company? Did we?
Through sound business practices.
So how do we vet that? That's what I'm asking you, through sound business practices. So how do you, how did you choose LifeLock as the company? There's many companies that do this. How did we pick LifeLock as the one?
Sure.
Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that, Counselor, you're a certified MCPPO. We engaged, and on an emergency basis, so time is of the essence through the procurement, in order to put a contract in place as soon as possible, we vetted the competitors in the market, and then we had discussions with Norton, who is the company for LifeLock, to try to determine a better price. And so they made several offers to the city through Mike Vaughn in the procurement office. We went back and forth on the pricing, and we arrived at what we believe to be a fair price.
Who is the expert in this field of people looking at security things that recommended a LifeLock product and not another service from somewhere else? I'm not questioning the procurement end. I'm just questioning, whose expertise picked LifeLock as the secure piece for people's personal information, or whatever it's being used for? How did we get to a stage where this was the company? Was there a rating system that you said, okay, this is the experts? Who is the expert in-house that said this is the way to go?
Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have an existing relationship with Norton. They are a vendor for the city already. And so during open enrollment, employees are able to, through the normal benefits process, you sign up at a cost to them. So because of this pre-existing relationship, they were the first dial, so to speak.
That's what I was basically getting to, is it's not about price. It was never about cost. It was about, you have an existing relationship, and this is the, and this is how we picked out this was the expert. Thank you.
No other comments? Need a motion to...
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ruck? Or Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a quick thing in relation to the various transfers. With the budget approval process coming up, I was going to ask through you to either the CFO or the auditor, probably the auditor, if we could just get a report of all the transfers that have happened out of the city manager's contingency over this past year, just to understand where that money's gone as we look at approving the next budget.
Counselor Gishia.
You need a second for that?
Was that a motion, Counselor Janess?
Sure. Let's make it a motion.
A second.
Second by Counselor Mercier, on the favor of the I. Post say no, the I's have it. Motion's carry. Counselor Gishia.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the auditor. Ms. Oaks, do we have the ability to pull from MUNIS a report and put it on the internet for, do we have that ability right now?
Ms. Oaks.
Yes, I can certainly do that. Yeah.
Okay. That would be helpful before budget to have that end-of-the-year actual caption of what we actually spend up year-to-date until maybe next week or whatever you can get to it. Thank you.
Right. I believe, yeah, I think I just have April to put up, and everything will be current, and I can do that, certainly.
I wasn't sure. That's why I didn't ask, because of all the cyber stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the LifeLock piece, I was wondering if we could get a copy of the contract, just so we could review that. And then the other question I had is, how long is this protection that we're purchasing for? Is this for the next year, longer, shorter?
Mr. CFO.
It will be for two years, and yes, we can get the council a copy of the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Ruck. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Ruck.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gishia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
It's 11 yeas.
The next line item is the reports of subcommittee, which is none tonight. And that completes the meeting. Are there any announcements? Counselor Yem?
This one is not a birthday, Mr. Mayor. The city of Lowell would like to invite all the residents and veterans, all the families, to participate in the Memorial Day service that will be held Friday, May 26, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. at the JFK Plaza. There will be speaking program, and the speaker will be Major Jacqueline Coles. We met her during the unveil of the Hometown Heroes banners. The Lowell High School ROTC will present colors. There will be national anthem, flag raising, with the Pledge of Allegion with the Lowell Cub Scout and Boy Scout. Breakfast will be served. So on behalf of the mayor's office, and Thai City Council, and the manager's office, I would like to extend the invitation to all who are watching tonight, and to participate and enjoy this service, Memorial Day service for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I didn't want you to finish before 8:30. That's why I actually wanted this time. But that's not true. But this week is National Public Works Week, and we just wanted to take this time from the council and the mayor, the administration, to say thank you to all our Public Works workers for all the hard work they do to keep our roads, our bridges, our water, our wastewater, our open space clean, and everything they do for all of us. We want to thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. An important piece of information was shared today, I noticed, from the city of Lowell's Economic Development Office. It's in regards to, it's called the Amber Grant, and it's available for women-owned businesses in the community. More information is available, I believe, on the city of Lowell Economic Development website. I have it on my socials, and it is out there on social media as well. And it's a significant chunk of money for us. of money for a small business. So, I would encourage any women business owners to apply and, and take advantage of the opportunity. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback off of Counselor Yam's comments earlier, Mr. Manager, if possible, could you put an emphasis on, on the veterans' memorials throughout the city, just to get them all, I'm sure it's already been, been done, but just to get them all cleaned up and maybe some freshening up for, for the weekend. Thank you.
No other announcement? Need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor of the I. Supposedly, no, the I's have it. Motion's carry. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for joining us.